Start the regular council meeting. And we're gonna make some adjustments to the agenda. So, regular council meeting is in session. Let the roll call show that all council members are present.
So noted.
And, did we have anybody here tonight to?
Yes.
Oh. Right here. Oh. I had my thumb on it. Sean. How are you tonight?
Very good, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Sean, how do you say your last name?
Toussaint.
Toussaint, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Sean Toussaint. I represent the Emergency Assistance Ministry and Casco Grande Assembly of God. Casco Grande Assembly of God's mission is helping every generation live their everyday lives influenced by their relationship with Jesus Christ. Our vision is for every believer to be equipped to share the gospel by reflecting Christ in our everyday life. And I'd like to offer a prayer tonight. Father God, I just thank you for the opportunity that we live in such a great country, state, and city that we can gather and invoke your name, that, Lord, we can ask for your guidance tonight, Lord, and to bless every member here tonight and every citizen that's attending, Lord God. We just ask that you guide them with wisdom and that you bring peace to their decisions, Lord God. And that each person here tonight will feel the touch, your touch, on their, on their lives through their participation in this meeting and through any other means you seem necessary, Lord. We give you all praise, honor, and glory in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please, Tommy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Toussaint. Thank you. Okay. Minutes?
Mayor McFarland, I move the approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from February 5th, and except for the record, the Arts and Humanities Commission meeting from January 3rd, the Planning and Zoning Commission from January 4th, and the Casco Grande Youth Commission meeting from January 20th as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of claims against the city for January 31st and February 13th as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the claims against the city. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have refused from this one.
Oh, okay. And then I'll say aye for you. All right. Any opposed? All right. So, the claims are approved. Meeting agenda. Larry, do we have any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are asking the mayor and council to move item K2, which is the consideration pointing of the city judge and setting the compensation to be our first action item. So, we'll ask that mayor and council move that in front of consent agenda. So, ultimately, that being the next item on the agenda.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move K2 in front of the consent agenda. I do have one thing. I do have a special presentation. Okay? You want to do it now?
Yeah.
Ralph, you want to stand? You want to do it here? Ralph didn't know he was gonna get called up front here. So, this, um, this is, oh. So, Ralph was our, um, our pro temp, was the mayor pro temp last year. And so, in appreciation, we wanted to give him this plaque. Basically, it says, "Appreciation, my presence, Ralph Al, for dedicated service of Mayor Pro Tem December 16, 2016, December 27."
I get it.
K2 is a consideration for the city judge. Um, I think the first process is nomination, so...
Sure.
You want to read off the nominees?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I will read the nominees in alphabetical order. As I read them, if you want to make a motion and a secondant, we'll make note of that. If not, we'll continue moving on to the next name. Okay? In alphabetical order, De'anni Juarez.
Nominate.
Second.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Uh, Robert Mendez.
Nominate.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second. Thank you. Scott Smith.
Nominate. Second.
You can't nominate them all.
We can't nominate them all.
Okay?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, all of the applicants have been nominated. The next process, I will read the names and, no, the next process, I will call out the council members' names, and as I call out your name, you will offer your vote. You only have one vote in which you can use for any of the three nominees. Okay, so as I call out the council.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you'd like to discuss any items, this would be the time to do it as well, before the vote.
If we're forced to another vote, we could discuss then, couldn't we? If we're forced to a second vote. So, good to go.
I think we're good.
Okay. Councilmember McBride.
Robert Mendez.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Robert Mendez.
Councilmember Cortson.
De'anni Juarez.
Councilmember Varela.
Robert Mendez.
Councilmember Powell. Mayor Pro Tem Herman.
De'anni Juarez.
Mayor McFarland.
De'anni Juarez.
Vote now stands with De'anni Juarez with four votes, which is the majority of the votes. De'anni Juarez is declared to be appointed as city judge.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you would need to set the salary at this point as well. By motion. So, um, is that done by a nom, uh, just a motion, right?
Yes.
I move to set the salary at range 76.
Second.
No.
Or no, I'm sorry.
We're gonna...
At 83,527 dollars.
Second.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I do a roll call vote on this, or does it have to be a?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, salary's been set. Now I can say congratulations. All right. Moving along, consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered... Wait, before I go anywhere, I also want to thank Mr. Smith and, and really, Robert, for coming and going through this whole process. I know it's not easy, and, and it is greatly appreciated. So, thank, thank you both for, for coming and participating. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which event, the items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Okay, public comments. At this point in time, we open the floor to public comments. If anyone would like to approach it, I know, I see John's wife, but I know her's Angela. You could've put your name on here, Angela.
Did you get the card back?
Yeah. Just pass it on, and then give it to Joanne.
Hi, distinguished, uh, panel. As you know, I'm John's other half. Besides what happened to him, which I'll let y'all in in a minute, if you don't already know, thank you. This is, one of my bigger fears is coming up and speaking in public, so please bear with me. Um, no, all jokes aside here, John did suffer a major, major heart attack. He is doing well. He appreciates all of you so much, I can't even begin to tell you. For those of you that have come and seen John, um, he does remember some of you, and others he doesn't remember at the moment, but he's doing his best, and once we tell him, "Oh, okay, just like, uh, David," he didn't remember David, but he sure remembers Dick, you know? It's like, we may not always agree, but we love you. So, which leads me to, um, my fear here. So, the Lord told me on Sunday, I was able to slip away from the hospital briefly. He said, "Take me with you. Take me with you into the community. Take me with you and be part of it. Be better. Bring the Lord with us." Which, that's all I believe I've done so far. I can't even tell you. He's probably tired of hearing from me. But John is doing much, much better. He is speaking. He insisted that I come and talk to you guys and share the love and the thanks and the gratitude, which a lot of you have been asking, is there anything I can do? Is there anything you need? You know, we are so grateful, really, we are, and appreciative. But I must say, um, a family member, a sister of mine, she says you can be grateful and appreciative as much as you want, but it's what you do afterwards to show your appreciation. So, that's why I'm here today to, to tell you guys how important, excuse me, sorry, how important you are, because John, John, you guys are his cake, his pie. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm the filling, if you will. But, um, yeah, no cakes or pies, thank you. His favorite flowers is, I told, uh, Joanna's tulips, you know? Just kidding. But, um, no, I did want to just thank my family too for John as well, that as much as they, they're doing and giving and being, and we get tired. And, so that's where you guys come in, okay? So, I appreciate your time, and just know that Dick, all right then, he's watching Fox News.
Angela, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Angela, thank you. And make sure you tell, make sure you tell John we said hello again and get, get well soon.
And we miss him.
And we miss him.
Yes.
And thanks for you coming, because you kind of filled in for him.
He was angry. He got, so, just so you know, he, he was only whispering a little bit, which is a miracle. But, when I told him, I says, "I'm not going to go, John, if you don't do what Petra, your nurse, says," you know? So, he says, "No, please, please go." And I said, "I'm not gonna unless you cough in this tissue." He said, "Okay." And he grabs his robe and coughs in his robe. And I, I says, "All right." Then he wasn't doing it again, and I said I wasn't coming, and he said, "It's important to me." So, I know he's good, so. What's important to him is you guys, and you're important to me as well, and I thank you very much.
You know, it's not an official meeting without John here.
Oh, yeah, I'm told.
I know it.
I asked him, I says, "You know, isn't there an empty seat up there for you, John, to really fulfill this destiny?" But, yeah, we're just taking the next.
We have more fun, because we both say, I don't rave to you completely, but I do kind of, and...
Yeah.
But, uh, there's a lot of prayers going up for him right now.
Oh, yes.
Including from, from my family, so...
Thank you for reminding me. When I was talking to my sister, she's one of them, one of five sisters, same as John, one of five brothers, you know? She, her name is Tammy Jo Dixon, and she has been amazing in contacting you and returning your calls and trying to keep up with all your well wishes, and, oh my gosh, it's just amazing. Is he that guy? Yeah, he's that guy. That guy, "Oh, he's not on city council?" No, he, he's that guy. So, when it gets better, you guys, we're all gonna, let's have a party and welcome him back, and we'll just name it, "I'm That Guy."
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Thank you for all your prayers. Thank you.
Public comments, anyone else? I'd have to ask, why are the scouts here? You guys doing a civic project? Is this your civic duty to come to a council meeting?
They're working on America, sir.
Okay. Very good. Well, keep it up. Keep it, keep up the good work.
We do it twice a month, so if you guys enjoy...
Feel free to come.
Okay. All right, seeing no one else, then I will close the floor to public comments, and we will move to item I, one.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager execute a professional services contract with Hilgard Wilson in amount not to exceed $48,800 to perform an update to the airport industrial park's drainage master plan. When Phase 1 and, or, excuse me, when Phase 2 and 3 of the airport industrial park was designed and constructed, it, it appears to, that the intent was to provide regional conveyance of, and retention of the significant storm flows off of each of those sites. Review of a recent proposed development project on parcels within the park caused staff to investigate and evaluate the intent and adequacy of the stormwater system that was designed, as well as what was constructed. And as a result of these efforts, staff believes that the infrastructure constructed is not adequate to handle the storm flows per the design. Therefore, we are wanting to establish what is needed out there as each of these lodge, go through future development to make sure we manage and handle those storm flows throughout that subdivision. Hilgard Wilson is the company that we've selected to perform this study, to help us make that determination, and, and the amount is not to exceed $48,800. And we do have adequate funds available in account 405-21-202-100-8305-18078 in this year's budget. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Um, I was trying to look and see, is there any kind of a map under the exhibits? There's nothing there. I'm, I'm trying to visualize, which part of this, of the park is this, the industrial park?
So, it's, Phase 3 is everything that's undeveloped out where, um, I think we have one parcel that's developed, and that is Acupolymer Products, they have their headquarters out there. Phase 2 is, is where about a third of the development is. Our north operations center is out there with a lot of other businesses. Phase 1 was actually everything up against Panal Avenue, basically.
Okay.
Those are the three phases of the industrial park. So, this, this has to do with Phase 2 and Phase 3.
Okay, thanks.
Matt?
Did you make up that budget number? That was the longest line item I've ever heard. Thank you, Kevin.
No, that was given to me by somebody who reportedly paid for this project.
No, but, but this is the un, on the hammer side of, of your job, but very necessary, because the airport industrial park, we're in talks with one right now, to go out there, and I think it's gonna, I think we're right on the edge of making it happen, so this is gonna be important to have. It's not something that a lot of people will see right away, but, you know, it's gonna, something that we really need to do, so, thanks.
That's a sorry evil. Mr. Powell?
The water itself, where does it end up?
Well, currently, there's a series of regional retention basins that were constructed in both Phase 2 and Phase 3, but what we don't believe is that, um, the way industrial parks typically are, are designed is that they can be constructed 100% impervious. In other words, an industrial prospect could come in and develop the entire site to be impervious, and the runoff would be handled by the system that is out there. We don't believe that that is the case, and we need to do some further investigation to determine if any improvements are needed to, asparty to these projects, that we get that constructed.
Does it naturally go in, into that wash, it's to the west of the airport, or?
Everything kind of flows from northeast to southwest. That's the way the topography kind of goes, so it would go towards that southwest corner of the development ultimately, and then that's kind of at the Thornton alignment.
Any other questions? Okay, then Gloria, can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5085. A resolution of the council, the city of Casco Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Hilgard Wilson LLC to provide an update to the city of Casco Grande Airport Industrial Park Phase 2 and 3 Storm Water Management Master Plan, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $48,800, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5085 as it was presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, item I, two, please.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with Sunland Incorporated to apply polymer-modified master seal to city streets as part of the annual pavement preservation program in an amount not to exceed $610,440. As council may recall, through our, our budget process, we developed a budget for our pavement maintenance program. That budget is $1.8 million this year. Within that budget, we break that down into three components, the pavement preservation portion, the crack seal, and the striping. And so, this evening, we're asking approval of one contract that is one of four parts of our pavement preservation program, and that's this PMM product, which we're going to be putting down. Very similar to past fog seals that we've done, but this is a polymer-modified, uh, product that is much more durable and really does apply a nice wearing surface onto the pavement. We've used it in several of our parking lots, in test areas, and we're really happy with the performance, as well as touring some of the surrounding cities to look at this product that's been used in the last five to seven years, watching how it's performed, and we think it's a good value for the city. And again, I wanted to mention all four of the components of our pavement preservation program that makes up that $1.8 million budget that we've established for this year. The $610,440 is for this material, and the map that was included as part of the RCA shows those subdivision areas that will be applied with this material. The other component of the pavement preservation is a rubberized chip seal, and there are two maps associated with that project. One identifying several subdivisions that are included, and then one map that identifies the downtown area, those streets that have not been improved in quite a while, but we're gonna be applying this rubberized chip seal as a way to provide a smoother, smoother wearing surface for those roads until we do the ultimate reconstruction in those areas in future phases of our downtown reconstruction. That contract does not need to come back to council, and the amount of that contract is $833,960, and that is going to, let me find my notes here. Let's see, Sunland, why can't I find that name here? Rubber chip seal. I apologize, the contractor's name escapes me right this moment. So, um, that's, that, that contract is with Cactus Asphalt, and in April 6th of 2017, we entered into a contract with them. It was a three-year contract. And when we had that contract approved, it also gave us budget authority for two additional years for pavement maintenance, as long as we did not spend over the budgeted amount for our entire pavement maintenance program for that year. So, that, that contract, we are moving forward with executing as part of this pavement preservation program. And the other two components are crack sealing, which is the preparation of the pavement before we do any of the service treatments, is $80,000, and then our striping that's associated with this, and all of the striping throughout the city for this year's program is estimated at $243,000. So, that makes up, it's within the $1.8 million that we budgeted, but wanted to give a, the city council an idea of how we came about this year's program. I also wanted to mention that last Thursday, we did a public open house at the Dorothy Powell Center, and had a okay turnout. We're hoping for a bigger one next year, but it's, it's a start at a public process where we introduce what our pavement program is, how we evaluate what products to do on which roads and when, and how we establish each year's program, as well as ways that they can get involved with putting us, or giving us their recommendations. Again, these projects are ready to move forward, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let me ask you one more question. Kevin, these maps, then, you included in your, this one's a little higher aerial version, it's just additional neighborhoods, right?
Yeah, but, so that's the, I believe the one you were holding up was the PMM. So, the PMM is a much, um, higher elevation view of the city, because the subdivisions are, are spread out, and we wanted to give everybody an idea of which subdivisions we're gonna be hitting with that product.
Yeah, that's the downtown one.
And then there are two of the rubberized chip seals, one higher level that show those subdivisions that are impacted, and then the lower elevation, which shows the downtown streets that are impacted.
So, you have a lot of neighborhoods you're gonna hit.
Yes, as council may recall, we alternate between arterial network, our major streets, and then subdivisions in every other year, so that we combine those economies of scale to try and reduce the cost of the product that we take.
Can we put this online somewhere, so people can see if their neighborhood is one of those? Is it online?
It should already be online as part of the attachments to the RCA, but we can also get that posted as part of our preservation program.
Get it to Kayla?
Yeah, we, we took some pictures at our open house, and she has the PowerPoint that we presented, and she'll be looking for ways to get that information back out to the public as well.
Okay, I think it's, I think it's good information. I think it's important that people know, you know, that their neighborhood is gonna get a, a seal, so...
One other question, the later, and the, we're coming to that big truck that helps the, in the paving process. We're gonna probably be able to do a lot more of our own fixing and, and take care of our streets internally, as well as having to go out for contract on some of the bigger paving jobs, or?
Well, we'll talk about that truck when that agenda item comes up, but...
Right.
It will not impact our pavement maintenance...
Okay.
...program, but it, what we do in pavement... impact our pavement maintenance program, but it, what we do in pavement maintenance doesn't impact on how we use that truck.
Ralph, you have a question?
First, a comment, I think it's great that you're targeting the downtown area. I think there's a lot of need there and good strategy. What are you looking at overall timeline? Just, I mean, it doesn't have to be like?
So we're currently underway with our crack sealing. We've purchased over half of the materials that we'll be putting down. Typically, we try to finish that project up in February, but this year was a very intense year, so we're, we're still working on getting the crack sealing finished up. The next portion of the project is actually gonna be our, our street striping that is not associated with any of these streets, so we'll do our annual striping program throughout the city. That should take place. The contract goes in front of council at the next city council meeting for first reading, and, uh, so then you'll have your second reading, thirty-day cure period, and then we'll give notice to proceed after that. These, uh, the PMM and the rubberized chip seal will most likely roll out in late April to early June, is typically when we start, like to start those projects. We try to get out of the school year and get some of our winter visitors out of town so that we have a less impact on the public, and that's typically when we roll those projects out.
Okay, Lisa?
Um, just a comment. Well, first, I'm glad you did do that pub, public meeting. I mean, even though there may not have been too many people, I think it's something that we should continue to do. You know, so many people see that this is a huge, you know, ticket item when it comes before us, but it's so critical. Um, and, you know, the minute we don't, you know, we get out of, out of that routine, our roads are gonna just get worse. So, um, you know, I just, I'm, I'm really glad we got them involved. I think it's important, like the mayor said, to post that information. Of course, people wanna know when it's their neighborhood. They don't really care. You know, it's the streets that they drive down every day, but, but I really do think that we have a pretty good system in place. Like you said, it's after so many years, you guys go out and do the, you know, the tracking of the roads and everything, so, you know, this is something I feel really good about, and I know it's really important. Um, you know, of course, not exciting. I'm sure our scouts are like, what the heck are you talking about? But these are our roads, you guys, you know, so sometimes the roads get really worn out from people driving and riding on them, so we have to make sure we put stuff on them to keep them, um, you know, somewhat, somewhat, um, healthy, so your mom and dad don't get mad when they're driving down them, so, um, but yeah, so, but, but thanks for, for keeping this up.
Any other questions? Matt?
Just want to point a clarification that none of, none of the councilmember's streets are on here, so it's purely, purely a scientific process. Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, Gloria, can I get a ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number three zero six three, in ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Sunland Asphalt for the purpose of applying polymer-modified master seal to certain streets, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed six hundred ten thousand four hundred forty dollars, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sunland Asphalt.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number three zero six three as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item I three. Devin?
Thank you. That last one, I promise. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council approve the expenditure of funds for one twenty nineteen Freightliner asphalt patch truck from Freightliner of Arizona, out of Tulsa, Arizona, in an amount not to exceed two thousand four thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Staff is requesting authorization to purchase this asphalt patch truck using state contract ADD SPO fourteen dash zero six three two four two. This, this vehicle is one of our specialized pieces of, pieces of equipment, um, so we use it for a variety of, of projects, but our main project is to go out and deal with permanent repairs of potholes. So during our wet season, we generate a lot of potholes around town, and we'll go out and we'll throw a cold patch material in, a material that we have year-round in bags, and it helps fill that void so that we don't cause any vehicle damage, until we're able to come back, assess that section of asphalt, and then come up with a, what we call a, a repair that'll get us to when that pavement is reconstructed or resurfaced in the future. So what this truck allows us to do is to buy a small quantity of asphalt, and the bed of this truck has different compartments, and one of those compartments is for the asphalt, and it heats the asphalt and maintains that three hundred and fifty-degree temperature that keeps that asphalt workable, and we're able to work out in the field all day long working different patches without that asphalt cooling to the point where it's no longer usable, so we have no waste in the product that we use. It also has a container that, uh, that holds the, the emulsion, which is the spray asphalt that we put on the edges of a patch, as well as, um, if we have a, a section of asphalt that has alligatored and we, we can't go out and do a major repair, we can do a sand seal, where you, you spray the asphalt emulsion on it, throw sand or a rock chip on top of that to buy us some time until we're able to come back and put a permanent repair together. It also has compartments where we can keep other materials, the aggregate material, and, uh, it has the attachment where the compactor for the asphalt is right on the truck, and we can pull that off, use it, and it allows one or two employees to go out and perform this, these patches, um, without the assistance of an entire crew. So it really is a, an effective way and an efficient way to manage our patching. And to go to Councilman's, Powell's question about we would be able to do larger projects, this is a small project piece of equipment. However, if you, if you have watched our pavement preservation program over the years, it's been in a very low-cost maintenance mode. We've deferred a lot of our partial reconstruct or even full reconstructs, uh, similar to VIP Boulevard last year. That was supposed to be a, a full reconstruct at, at one, or 2.5 million dollars. We ended up doing a, a lesser project for eight hundred thousand dollars to buy us some time on that pavement, because we just don't have the revenue streams coming in to support a, a pavement reconstruct program. What that does is it, I, I like to call it Band-Aids on broken legs. Eventually, we're gonna have to fix the problem, but as we go through these interim years doing these lesser improvements, we're gonna have more potholes develop, and we need to be able to react quicker and, and, and repair those and, and to, to hold off. So that's what this truck does. Our old truck is a nineteen ninety-one, twenty-seven-year-old, uh, truck. It is literally falling apart. We can no longer efficiently get parts when, when something does break on it, and the asphalt box portion of it is starting to fall apart as well. So it really is time for this piece of equipment to be, to be replaced. So when you see the thirty-one thousand miles on this vehicle, it's not a lot of dry time, but it does sit out there and, and, and it is one of our workhorses, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, you know, I, I do agree that the pavement maintenance is very important, and I did look real quick to see if there's any used trucks like this available on the internet, and there was none that I could find easily, Kevin, so, I appreciate it. But just so everyone knows, how often, like, how many days a year do you think you use that truck?
It really varies, um, so we may use it two hours in a day and then go on to do something else, and we're able to do that and, and park it and then take it out the next day or when we need it. Last year, we used it a total of fifty-four hours. The year before that, we used it a total of, I think it was a hundred and four hours, but the total time used doesn't count the time that's parked there on the project while they're actually doing the repairs. So it's, it's hard to really show how much we're out there, except if we went back and counted up all of our daily work logs, we could calculate that, but it's about fifty-four hours of actual equipment use while it's moving.
But it's, uh, something that we couldn't really hire someone easily to do because no one's gonna come out for this little job and then come back the next day or a week later, correct?
One of the reasons it was most likely originally purchased is because of the cost savings to the city. To have a contractor mobilize out here and do that type of patch repair, or to even try to do it efficiently in-house without that equipment, you get a lot of asphalt that starts to cool before we're able to get it into the, the prepped area for asphalting, and you end up having a lot of throwaway material, and you just don't get as good a project. This allows us the time to really do it once and do it right, and not have to return until we do a, an overlay or something like that in the future.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, Gloria, ordinance, please?
Ordinance number three zero six four, in ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Freightliner of Arizona LLC for the purchase of a twenty nineteen Freightliner truck, authorizing the expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed two hundred four thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Freightliner of Arizona LLC in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona State Bid List.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number three zero six four as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote on ordinance three zero six four, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Item J one. Gloria, is this, you were gonna?
Oh. I'm too used to just, um, taking roll calls. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, before you, we do have, um, acceptance of a resignation from Mike Reed, and also to approve appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Uh, we are recommending, Mayor McFarland is recommending the appointment of Ms. Carmelita Mena, um, who will take over Mr. Mike Reed's vacant position. The term will extend through February first, twenty twenty-one.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the appointment of Carmelita Mena to the Parks and Rec Board.
Second. Okay, first, I just wanna publicly thank Carmelita also for stepping up and volunteering. I don't think she's here. I don't see her.
No?
Um, so, um, but anyway, I just wanna make that publicly.
Mr. Mayor, may I also add that to the motion, ask that you add to the motion to also to accept the resignation of, um, Mr. Reed?
Yes. I will add the second, resignation to Mr. Reed.
We can just do, uh?
Voice?
Voice, vote on this, right? Okay, thank you. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Did I hear a second?
Mm-hmm.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Carmelita is approved, and the resignation of Mr. Reed is accepted. J two.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we ask that you accept Mayor McFarland's recommendation to accept Monica Vincent's resignation from the police advisory board, and also his recommendation to appoint Nicholas Peterson and Pablo Corina, Correa, 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 to the police advisory board. Uh, Mr. Nicholas Peterson's term will extend through two twenty, twenty twenty. Pablo Correa's term will extend through two twenty, twenty nineteen.
Move for approval, Mayor.
The second.
And acceptance? Is that good enough?
Yes, Pablo's here.
And are, is any, any of those gentlemen here?
Pablo?
Pablo's right here.
Could you just stand up, please, Pablo? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation, and the two appointees, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Correa, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, J two is accepted. J three?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, our next item is a recommendation by the mayor to reappoint David Brett Benedict, Kirk McCarville, Ollie Solzberg, to the Industrial Development Authority Board with terms to extend through August fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept the motion as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I don't think any of these gentlemen are here. I know Kirk's not here, and I don't think Ollie's here, but I do wanna publicly thank them and, and appreciate their, their service to the city of Casa Grande. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, J three is approved. All right, K one, resolution approving final plat. Mr. Tice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, let's see if I can get this on here. Let's see if I can just get the, uh, presentation on my monitor or not.
At least you could've brought some hand sanitizer.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll, it's on your monitors, right?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so this is a final subdivision plat for a property in the southeast corner of Potabom and Florence Boulevard. The subdivision plat is a two-lot plat. Lot one fronts on Potabom, and lot two is to the east of that and fronts on Florence Boulevard. The property is owned commercially, and so, um, you know, it could be a variety of commercial uses could occupy these lots. We are currently reviewing a major site plan for a preschool daycare on lot one, so that's under review at the staff level. That will be going to the planning commission at a future meeting for a conditional use, so it's not approved yet, but it is under review. There is no, oh, thank you, there is no project, um, under review for lot two. This is a fairly routine and simple subdivision, but there's a couple points I'd like to make you aware of. The first would be the, uh, how these properties are being sewed. As we reviewed this development, we came to realize that there is no sewer main in Florence Boulevard through here. The sewer is actually in Potabom. So the connection for the sewer for lot one, you can see in yellow, they'll extend a sewer main, uh, from Potabom through lot one to lot one's eastern boundary, and that sewer main is basically gonna follow an internal access drive, which is why it has a little jog in it. In the future, as lot two develops, that sewer, uh, main and easement will be extended across the full width of lot two, over to the eastern boundary of lot two, and the reason why we're requiring that to occur is that the property further to the east, uh, the Warren Funeral Home Complex, uh, does not seem to be on sewer, but probably is on septic. So in the future, if they need to, if their septic fails, for example, and they need to connect to sewer, we want to make sure that we had the sewer main available for that connection, and that sewer main is being sized appropriately to provide service to the property, uh, to the east. In discussing this a little bit with the city engineer this evening, he mentioned to me that, uh, because we have multiple property owners involved here, there'll be one owner of lot two, one owner of lot one, and potentially another owner to the east, uh, using the sewer main, that it actually has to be public, um, versus private. So the RCA mentions that it would be a private sewer, it actually will be a public sewer. So we'll make that change on the plat to make sure it's locate, it's identified as a public sewer easement and a public sewer main, which allows all the property owners to be able to hook onto it if they need to. The other thing I wanna talk about a little bit was access, the properties will access both from Potabom and from Florence Boulevard using existing curb cuts that are there. No new curb cuts, no new D cell lane, uh, for, for Florence Boulevard. There are cross-access easements that lot one and lot two can drive across each other's property to access either of those two access points, as well as the Circle K traffic, which as you know is currently using that existing access access point onto Florence Boulevard. So with that, I'm just going to tell you that there was a preliminary plat for this project approved by the Planning Commission in December, and this final plat does conform to all of the city regulations regarding design and standards and subdivision requirements, and staff would recommend council's approval of the final plat.
I'm filling in for John McGuire. He asked the question. 41 East Penny Lane came to the podium to address the commission in support of the previous plat. Mr. McGuire questioned if the timeframe for completion of the project starts with approval of the final plat, and Director Tice said it's a three-year project.
Okay, then.
In memory of.
I know you talked access and in the planning and zoning notes, there was discussion about traffic. So when that plan comes, they'll have to do a traffic study, is that correct?
That's correct. With Lot 1, which is the daycare proposal, which is a conditional use that's under review right now, we do have a traffic impact analysis under review. I can't, I haven't read that analysis, so I can't tell you if it requires additional modification to the Potabom access or not, though that is under review by city staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then I'll ask for a resolution, please.
Resolution number 2825.202, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the final plat for Section Potabom Avenue and Florence Boulevard, a re-subdivision of a portion of Moeller Sellers Unit Number 1 located at the southeast corner of Potabom Avenue and Florence Boulevard, requiring the provision of a financial guarantee method to secure the satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of required improvements and the timing for the completion thereof, and authorizing the execution by the city manager of supporting documents.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the approval of resolution number 2825.202 as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yep.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, that takes care of most of today's business. We have reports from the council. The executive session was removed, so we'll move right to reports and I'll start with you, Donna.
All right, just a couple of things. We had a couple of regulars that we talked about tonight, but I also wanted to wish David Platt his birthday, and he is spending it with us, so thank you, David. And then I also wanted to mention Black Box Foundation is going to have their grand opening at the Women's Center coming up on March 3, so I hope everybody can make it for that. And hats off to Dick Powell for a great Odomtash parade. We had a great time and even got to see Larry and the mayor on horses with you this year, so good job.
I don't have a whole lot to report. This, I took mine from the rodeo and that, and I know that there was some conversation on CG Chat a little bit about the rodeo parade and the rodeo itself. You know, I remember when we started out with our veterans parade and it was on Cottonwood Lane, and we all spread ourselves all along and it was, there were like 20 of us, and that was the first one. And now it's so well-attended and folks come and our rodeo and our Indian cowboy stage, it's really taken a lot of transition. We went from Odomtash to No Odomtash to whatever. A lot of effort goes into it. So some of it's expectation, but I truly hope and I believe the community really appreciates. Nobody makes money on this. This is just for our community and it really adds something special that a lot of communities do not have. And at the end of this, then all city staff must shave their beards now that the rodeo's over. Almost over, but that's it.
Okay, Mr. Powell?
Well, I want to thank you too and the money I gave you. I hope we'll spend. We had the best attendance at the Odomtash rodeo that we've had since 2009. And the weather was perfect. Monday came, we had a big rope and it got blown and rained on and everything else, but today was the pre-survey and the survey is roping tomorrow. It's like the open in golf. It's the very top people in team roping across the country that will participate in it. Thursday, we have a Canadian Day, which we say thank you to the Canadians. And Friday's kind of a day of rest, and then we had the ranch rodeo and barrel racing on the last weekend. I told Larry that we couldn't do it without him. He said, yes, you can. I said, no, we can't. But if he had an odometer on him, I don't know how many miles you walked around there during it, but hopefully everybody got a VIP if you want to come out and watch it. The Canadians are real excited about it and our mayor turned out to be a pretty good horseman and he was kind of showing off his skills and Larry was on a horse that you said always wanted to run away or do something to keep you nervous, that Tony fixed you up with every year. Garrett and I were in the parade. We had two new horses that had never been to a parade, so we were kind of like this, but we got through it fine and want to thank the community. And as I say, we still have a little over a week to go on this and, or a little bit less than a week, but through this next weekend and I appreciate the good words. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go in order, so I'm going to go next. Breaking it up. First of all, make sure you mark your calendars. The State of the City address will be Wednesday, March 14 at 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. at the Property Conference Center. So reminders will be going out, but mark your calendars. Got yours down already? And just a little recap. Last week, we had our fourth Mayor's Homelessness Task Force, and I thought it was extremely successful and a lot of good work was done. We're right at the point now where we've identified eight different goals that the commission's going to work on, and those eight goals then will be broken up into action plans. And so we've assigned parties from the commission to that and then they're reaching out to the community, especially those who have shown interest in the work of the task force. So we're going to get all those, bring all those, all the parties back together and then come up with a definitive action plan. It looks like it's coming together really well. I had the opportunity last week to speak also at the Kiwanis and the Western Realtors Association, also the Chamber of Biz Outlook Luncheon, and a lot of good positive comments out there. I think a lot of good activity going on in the city. I mean, Odomtash was crazy. Also then went to the Elks Lodge, had their 150th anniversary this past Saturday, so congratulations to the Elks. I got to speak a little bit there as well. And then a reminder that tomorrow morning is the Mayor's Reading Club, so if you're a reader, please make sure you show up. And we've got the Youth Leadership Day this weekend. Am I taking your thunder?
That's why you went.
Yeah, there you go. He's got tired of us all.
And we also have the night for the museum also this Saturday. And I'll leave you with the rest.
Next time in the parade, Lisa and I get the faring in with the siren, please, because I had to keep making the noise and it wasn't that impressive.
Was it broken?
Yeah, it was.
I got that one.
We had a good time.
Yes.
It was like high school because there was three of us in the front seat of that thing. But I think the Historical Society and the Casa Grande Middle School art class for making our banners for our fire trucks. But to speak a little more, Youth Leadership Day, it's a big day for the Youth Commission. This Saturday, it is at Vista Grande High School, starts at 10 a.m. We are having state legislators speak there, Acela Blanc, TJ Shope, Tom O'Halloran is speaking at lunch, and our very own mayor of Casa Grande, Craig McFarland, is doing the closing remarks. And this is a project that they're doing through the ASU Democracy Program, which is a statewide program, so it's a big deal for them and it's like herding cats, but I think we've got it all. So it'll be fun. If you guys want to come, you're more than welcome to come, stop by or stay the whole day, whatever you want to do. Lunch is at 11 to 12, so, and that's when Tom O'Halloran is speaking. So if you guys are interested, please do stop by. The kids would love to see you. And they're having groups from all over the state of Arizona that's going to be there. And I went to the rodeo and it was fun. Thanks.
Liked your hat, too.
Got it at house?
Nice. There you go.
Great hat.
Ralph?
Also had the opportunity to attend the Casa Grande Chamber Biz Luncheon, and there's a lot of great information. Mayor did a great job in putting everything out there and he promised that you would hold back so that State of the Union would have.
It would be different.
Yeah, different. And really good turnout. Well, I think they've really done a lot. And on March 2, the Cesar Chavez Dinner will be happening and we're awarding $45,000 to 50 students and it'll bring us up to $488,000 in 12 years. And done a lot of great stakeholder support. The city of Casa Grande has been there for 12 years since it's in session and so have Lisa and Gloria. And I know our past two mayors who are sitting in the front have also, were very supportive to getting this started, so thank you, everybody.
Yes, the Biz Outlook, you know, the Chamber, it's always great going to this event. You know, they do three a year, and so many times we think that everyone knows what's going on, that everyone's watching TV or coming to the meetings and, you know, reading the paper. But, you know, a lot of people really don't have, you know, all the up-to-date information. So I think that was really good and the mayor did a really good job letting everyone know what the goals and what's happening with the city. So, you know, it's definitely something that we need to participate in. The Odomtash, you know, I grew up in Casa Grande and I've been going to that parade for years. And it's just so exciting, you know, to go and see the people that still come and the cultural, you know, the culture that's there with all the Native American dancers that are still in it. And, you know, it's just something that, you know, we're known for and, you know, our partnerships with our native communities. And I'm just, you know, I really applaud, you know, Councilmember Powell and everyone else that is continuing, you know, this tradition in our community. It was just great to see so many people. They weren't interested in us in the firetruck. They wanted that siren and kept, you know, go like this and we couldn't do anything about it. So to next year. You know, Ralph mentioned the Cesar Chavez event. You know, I've been part of this, yes, for 12 years. And, you know, for those of you that aren't on this type of committee, you know, it's very challenging. You know, you think, you know, it's easy to just give away a few scholarships, but, you know, every year we have to review 100 applications and, you know, see, you know, the passion and, you know, just the energy, you know, that these kids have. You know, most of them are, you know, Latino, you know, first-generation college kids that are going to school. And, you know, they, these essays are just incredible. So to just separate, you know, and pick 50, you know, 50, but it's 50 scholarships. I mean, it's amazing, you know, that we can even do that. But for any of you that have given a dime, have attended that event, you know, please know that this money is going to the kids. And these kids, I was so impressed. I mean, this year, we have a kid going to Princeton. We have a student from Vista going to Brown University. We have our own Youth Commission President that's on the waitlist to Harvard. I mean, we have some great kids that are doing some great things. And, you know, yes, the majority of our kids are going to Central Arizona and ASU and UVA, but, you know, I mean, we're very fortunate to have, you know, that, you know, these schools in our state, they're great schools because a lot of these kids can't afford it. But, you know, the excitement when they get this scholarship and they come with their nanas and their tapas and, you know, everyone to this event and have their little medallion and get their certificate, it means a lot, especially to these parents that didn't go to college. So it's just something that, you know, I thank Ralph and everyone else that, you know, started all this. And, you know, I'm just, you know, very pleased to participate, you know, in that group. And then I think that's pretty much it. Oh, no one even mentioned the groundbreaking of the community. And I was the one that got snowed in Chicago and I was there. My flight was canceled.
Boards are out back.
But, yes.
Out in the hall.
But, of course, I heard it was great and it was windblown. Yeah, everyone got windblown and everything.
If you haven't seen the, if you haven't seen the artist renditions, they're out in the hall, so take a look at them before you leave tonight. And again, another shout-out to a couple of our past mayors here sitting in the front row. So you scouts want to meet two of our past mayors. They're right here in the front row. Introduce yourself. All right, anything else?
No.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
No.
All right, then I'll accept a motion to.
Aye, so move.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Meeting is adjourned.